Well, I think our due is going to be to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the Select Board meeting for March 15th, 2021. Thank you for everyone who's here, including any guests and anybody who may be watching on television as well. We'll start with the minutes of the Select Board meeting of February 16th, 2021. Is there any motion in regards to that?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Thank you. The minutes have been, a motion has been entered to approve the minutes and second, and I'm assuming that is as presented in the packet. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, I will have to call a roll. Yes, Catherine?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And Dennis, are you on now?
Yes.
Dennis, we are just in the process of approving the minutes. Do you want to cast a vote on that? They've been moved to be approved.
Yes.
Okay, so it's unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on to warrants 36 through 39. Ralph, I believe that was yours. Is that correct?
I'm afraid it is.
You don't have to fear with that.
A lot of distance. Well, let's see, I guess. 36, 37 in aggregate. Vendors, 377, 057, 62. State fees, 1,003, 1725. Another state fees, 5,097, 91. And payroll is part of this as well. 16,617, 68. In aggregate, 393, 675, 30. Highlights from the vendor portion. We spent 2,198 for a switcher replacement, which I guess is for our video component to broadcast our meetings. We made another 28,137, 66 payment to Cushing for our winter maintenance contract. 9,412, 78. Mayan Municipal for health insurance. And RSU 38 showed up at the usual 302, 909, 02. And we made some debt service payments to USB trust for the fire truck and the dam bond in the amount of 7,009, 7719. So again, the total is 393, 675, 30, and I would move approval of same.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second and to approve the treasures warrants 36 and 37 in the total of 393,675 dollars and 30 cents. Is there any discussion on the treasures warrant?
I have one question.
Please.
What was the easy badges for of $2,120?
I believe those are for the fire department.
Great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments, or a discussion on the treasures warrant? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Catherine?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. I'll move on to Select Board communications. I'll just lead right off with my own and then ask anybody else who wants to join in. Just a quick update, several members of this board attended the school board meeting where select boards join. It was done remotely for the most part, although one of us could have, I believe, attended in person. But we attended remotely, as did all the other participants, except for a few board members who were in the room. It looks to me like they are currently situated at an increase of 428,000. And our portion of that would probably be roughly 150,000. There's a formula that needs to be applied to that. They're not at their final bottom line yet. They still have some work to do. Although I think this is probably honing in a little bit closer to where they'll end up. So I wanted to update the community on that participation by us. And with that, anybody else who on the Select Board that wants to mention anything?
Hi, I have three things that I'd like to mention to the public and to the Select Board. First thing is very simple. Reedfield Heritage Days is happening, and we've talked about this before, but now we're starting to plan in earnest. If you are a member of a committee that would like to be involved in Reedfield Heritage Days, if you are a member of the public and you would like to be involved in Reedfield Heritage Days, if you are someone who is a party planner and want to help us throw a party for the town, you should join Reedfield Heritage Days. You can do that by emailing me, dprice@reedfieldmaine.org. dprice@reedfieldmaine.org. There is a process to get you on the committee officially. If joining official committees isn't your thing, that's okay. We still want you and need you. This year, we want to talk about how we can party. We got two years' worth of Heritage Days to put into one weekend. So please remember that, Reedfield Heritage Days. That's number one. Number two thing is, and I'm glad Catherine is here, because I know this is a part of her world as well as Eric. I was contacted by a taxpayer in our town and was really educated about something that I think we can all agree on. And when I did a little research, I discovered that the fee schedule for the transfer station is phenomenal. There is no material or anything that is not thought of in terms of going back to the waste stream. It is an extensive document, and it is very clear. However, one thing I would like to ask and throw to the committee, Catherine, as a person on there, and Eric as the transfer station czar. I think we should eliminate the fee for light bulbs. They are only a dollar, and sometimes I find that the citizen who contacted me mentioned that they're so easy to chuck if you, you know, because if you don't have, you know, some money or something like that. And everything else has a good price. The rest of it's located on the fee schedule. You can find it online in a little box. But the fluorescent light bulbs, the CFC light bulbs, I think we should accept for free. It's a nominal fee, but it's enough to keep people from recycling them, and that was what was told to me. And after speaking with Eric and doing some research, it looked like a possibility. So I would like to offer that up humbly and honestly, and thank you very much. The third thing I would like to talk about is the fact that nomination papers are available. These are available at the town office, and it is important for you to know that, public people, because you should run for office. There will be two, I believe, seats open for the Select Board, and I think that it's very important that people run. And I am asking you now, the first Select Board meeting after those papers became available at the town office, to be interested in running and helping run your town. I am open again for questions. If you have a question and you want to contact me about a particular appointment or a board or committee that you are interested in, please get in touch with me. Get in touch with Eric. Go to the town, read about them. They are posted. But please be involved in your government. That's all. Those are my three things, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
I just want to reiterate the last item that Dennis mentioned about running for positions. And that is that we have rarely had anyone run for school board in the last several rounds of elections. And I really would encourage someone who is interested in that particular part of governance to not just let that go to a write-in campaign of somebody with good intentions, but somebody simply getting written in with a couple dozen votes. It would be nice to see somebody on the ballot for that. And so those nomination papers are also available, and I can't speak to the number of positions that are open, but I, there's always at least one. So other folks that have something to mention, please.
I'll go next.
Thank you, Karen.
So as I mentioned before the meeting started, I had actually gone and picked up my mail at mailbox today. So that had been a few months, and I read through the main townsmen's, and I came across several things that I thought were interesting. One of which states, and Eric, I don't know who our local health officer is, if we have one. But if we don't have one, then that duty falls to the chair of the Select Board. Bruce?
We do have one.
We have one. Dr. Fagan.
Excellent. Okay. Although I don't think we've had to utilize that person during the pandemic, which is good because we've had so much other information. There is another interesting one on can Select Board members socialize, which the answer is absolutely. You just can't conduct any business or substantial discussions. And then another one of interest was about the bicentennial, and now they're talking about it being for 207, it's 201. So for Maine, we're going to celebrate 201 years. So the commission is looking for still having events taking place in July and August and some in October with pandemic restrictions easing up and hopefully easing up more so. They're looking for some things to happen, and I know Reedfield had a few things planned, and I hope that interested parties are paying attention and hopefully might be able to do some things in the fall. That's it.
Anybody else?
Bruce?
Ralph, go ahead, please.
Follow up on Dennis's comment about recycling of the fluorescent tubes. Eric, it's my assumption that that fee is a dollar in, dollar out, just to cover the cost of recycling. Do we know what it actually costs us per year to recycle and what it would cost the town if we were to waive the fee?
So that cost really is just for overhead and storage and things like that. In the past, we did have a legitimate cost to actually getting rid of those. But over the last, I'd say, 18 months to two years, we had switched over to a program through Veolia and the Maine DEP that allows us to get rid of those at no cost. So that dollar basically is just there for, well, it's a legacy cost really. And I guess if I had to put a value on it, it would be for overhead and facilities. So there's no real cost to get rid of it, and I think it's a great idea.
I agree as well.
The Solid Waste Committee is meeting next month, so we can certainly make a recommendation at that time. And of course, Eric can take any action he wants in the meantime.
I'm gonna wait. I think it's good to have everybody look at it, and we can talk about, you know, the cost and all that, but I do think it makes sense.
Thank you. Great. We'll move on to, everybody had, Chris, did you have anything to add?
Nothing.
I guess I will add one final thing, and that is that I had my first COVID shot out of town at the Bangor Cross Center. It was painless, and I'll have a second one there. And I just highly recommend that everyone get inoculated. We've been holding these meetings like this for a very long time, and we're all looking forward to things changing. And one of the best things you can do towards things changing is to get vaccinated for COVID-19.
I know, and that I had both mine.
Two for Chris. She's ahead of me.
One for me.
One for Catherine. Dennis, you'll be in. Ralph, you have two?
I have two.
All right. The youngster.
Not yet.
Town staff reports. Eric, please.
Sure. I'll just run through this fairly quickly. We've been busy mostly with budget and the transition to spring work. But I will say that roads are posted, and I'll ask folks to please respect those weight limits. Most commercial vendors are very good about doing so, but I just want to make sure that everybody knows that the roads are posted. And, you know, one vehicle that goes down a road that's too soft could cause tens of thousands of dollars of damage. So please do respect those posting limits that are up there. They're there for a reason. And as always, if the ground is ever solidly frozen, you can travel it, no issues at all. This morning, you could have run, you know, a fully loaded log truck down any road in town, but not so tomorrow by the same time. So I just want to make sure that's out there. We received 10 completed bids for the paving projects that we had looked at. The low bid was somewhere around $75,000 to $100,000 less than what we had budgeted for the two years' worth of paving. So we came out very, very good with respect to those projects, and I'm very much looking forward to getting that done. The road committee will be meeting this week to take a look at those virtually, and then we will have a recommendation for the board on the 29th, so you can make a decision then. But 10 bids that were very competitive was a wonderful thing to see. The next item would be the bids for tree work in the cemetery. We did receive just two, and the low bid was under $5,000. The high bid wasn't anywhere as close to that. It was somewhere around, you know, eight or nine, I think, is what it was reported as. So I've authorized the cemetery section to just go ahead with that work because it's a small dollar value. The bid package for winter road maintenance went out about two weeks ago, and we expect to have bids back for that sizable contract. The last time it went out, it was 1.25 million for five years. But we'll see where it comes in this time. We did shorten the term of that contract to three plus one to make it a little bit less of a long-term commitment, which first seemed like a good idea, but as the years kind of went by, we realized that it might be good to have a bit more, you know, transition or competition at the end of the cycle. So those are due April 15th, and we'll be able to prepare for then next winter with a new plow contractor. I don't believe that John's going to be bidding again, but he could. He could do that. We're not sure until the numbers come in. We did see a lot of activity at the Reedfield Beach this winter, and I do want to thank again the rec board for all of their efforts to make that a public place all year round. They did a fantastic job with their ice fishing derby and also with the ice skating that they were able to manage and keep, you know, open for most of the season. So some fantastic work on their part. Moving on to the transfer station, we should have internet at the station within the next two months. I did sign an agreement with Spectrum to provide service there. We weren't able to get anything close to the speeds we wanted through other providers, and even Spectrum is going to be, it'll be interesting to see what happens. But we're looking at internet so that we can have staff have more valuable use of their time down there. Also, so we can perhaps, if it makes sense, move to a point-of-sale system onsite so we can track all of our payments electronically and also for the larger amounts, take credit card payments, which has been a request for a number of years. So I think that should help people pay more when they need to and be more inclined to bring stuff in because they can, we can then accept plastic. So those are two changes that I think are going to be very helpful and add value to the residents and to the staff as we're trying to improve that facility. And then with respect to administration and personnel, the town office is open to foot traffic. We've been that way for over a month now, I think, and it's been really nice to have that change. But I just want to mention it again because we still regularly have people call and say, well, I need to make an appointment. But no appointment necessary. We just ask that folks wear masks and limit the number of people in the lobby at any one time. We are hiring for a number of positions currently. We have multiple positions for part-time seasonal maintenance, grounds maintenance, and beach attendant staff. We also have a full-time position for a beach superintendent, and these could be great jobs for younger people or folks that are retired. We're really excited to be getting back to doing things. Everything was put on hold this last year, and not everything happened the way we wanted it to. So getting out in the field and seeing people working is going to be fantastic. And then we're also hiring for a town clerk, as we're going to talk about later tonight, and code officer. Both of those positions will be open until filled. We had an applicant for the code position who tried out the position for a week, but let me know this morning that he wasn't interested in continuing on in that role. So a bit of a disappointment for us there, but it's better to know those things, I guess, outright out front. So we'll be going back to the drawing board and looking for someone in the trades or with, you know, a skill set that's conducive to that job. So if you know anybody or have any leads, let us know. It's an important one to fill. And that basically wraps up my town manager report. I'm happy to take any questions.
Are there any questions for Eric? Eric, I have just one quick one on the road paving. This goes back to your hat of road commissioner. The bids were very competitive, which is kind of the opposite of what we've seen on the building stuff. Any inkling what that means? Or am I just reading into a situation where it was just competitive? I didn't know if maybe materials are down or whatever.
Materials are down, I mean significantly from what they were two years ago when we last did paving. But the cost of asphalt is down. It's going back up slowly. But most people have locked in their prices for the summer season already with the manufacturers of the liquid asphalt. So we think that what's happening is that, you know, it's a, it's a good time to be doing paving. There's a lot of companies that want to do the work. People have been delaying and deferring this activity for a while. As you know, every type of construction, there's been a lot of demand, but people have had to slow down because of issues with COVID. And even when people are outside doing, you know, laying asphalt, it doesn't mean that the asphalt plant can function at the same capacity. There have just been across-the-board impacts. And a lot of these companies are looking forward to getting back to doing this work. Also, we've had a number of people say that they really like our paving program. They know that we have a 12-year cycle to a 15-year cycle that every year the town of Reedfield puts out $150,000 to $300,000 worth of work. So very positive feedback on that plan that we have, and they know that we're a reliable business and that we are good to work with. So I think there's a few things going on there.
Great. Any other questions for Eric? Thank you. We'll move on to boards, committees, commissions, and departments. I want to thank the Trails Committee for their minutes of October 27th, 2020, and January 26th, 2021. Thank you very much. Those will be included in the record. Am I muted?
No, I just wanted to say something.
Sure, please do.
All right. I don't know if anyone, obviously they're not on the Zoom, but maybe they'll watch later. But just had an interesting observation from the trails experience that I had recently. There was a map, and I took a map, and I wanted to take a look at it. And it was so cool because it was on this cardstock paper, and it was all of the trails, this one over here and that one over here. However, because it was on cardstock paper, almost like your checkbook, it fell like just into three pieces. Just make note of that, Eric, if you want. I don't know if they need to know that. Yep, okay. Yep, gotcha. I love it. I love it.
Is this the one?
Yes, but it was on like cardstock, and because it had been folded, every time I opened it up, it just basically pulled right apart.
Yeah, no, I actually just folded this one for the second time. I have it pinned to my corkboard, and I just pulled it. Look at that. Point taken.
Thank you, and I appreciate it.
Hey, Dennis, didn't get lost. No, it's a fact. Okay, and I want to also thank the library board for their minutes of February 3, 2021. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the Select Board on any subject? Seeing none, and hopefully when we get back to live meetings, this will be a little bit different. We do have one member of the public here. Catherine, did you want to say something?
Well, since that member of the public is Grace Keane, I assume for Grace's iPad. I guess we, no one has mentioned yet that we had an election last week, and I know that Grace was one of the workers there, and I'd just like to thank all of those folks, including town workers, employees who worked at the polls. That was really great. They're always professional and friendly, and it was very efficient, and thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to 21090, which is to consider the resignation of Deborah Nichols as town clerk with great regret. And I'll make that motion that we accept the resignation of Deborah Nichols with great regrets as our town clerk. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Any comments?
I'm very sad to see Deb go. She is incredibly competent, very friendly, really organized. She's leaving not, I don't think so much because the job was too much, but the times and her own personal life. And I just want to say thank you for a great job done.
Yeah, I would echo that. I really appreciate the job that was done. And especially this last year in the general election, which was a large turnout election in a different facility under a pandemic. You couldn't quite get that many things back into a challenging situation. And Reedfield, under her leadership as town clerk on that election, did a stellar job, I thought. Okay, great. So we'll go ahead and take a vote on that, consider the resignation. Any other comments before I do so?
Deb is going to be missed.
Absolutely. Catherine?
Unfortunately, yes.
Ralph?
Pray to have to vote yes if that's what she wants, professional, competent, low-key. She is really going to be missed.
Chris?
Same thing. She's going to be missed, but yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
I'm gonna vote no. I vote no in tribute to the work she's done. But my assignment is, I know what she wants, so obviously I think that's the very best. So I'm simply voting no to just show within the record that, gee, we just didn't want you to go. Okay, probably won't do that again. Business, consider a draft. This is really ongoing business rather than old business. Are you going to do a screen share on this, Eric? Is that your plan?
I certainly can, or we could just go through the changes.
I'm fine with that too, but I want to check with what the board thinks would be easiest for them.
Changes is good. Changes is good for me.
I'm okay with going over changes, but Eric, I think you should do a screen share so since it's being recorded and anybody online even now can't see it.
You're right. Yeah, that's the way to go. So I'll ask, ask, oh, Bill, to please allow screen sharing so I can do that. Okay.
Yeah, in the meantime, I'll just make an introductory comment in terms of where we are with the budget. At our, I believe at our next meeting, we will be doing a vote on this budget. At that time, it will have processed through not only this meeting, which is kind of an update, but also we'll have on Thursday night a public hearing on the budget itself. And I would encourage anybody who wants to participate to do so. There is comments that you can give to the Select Board in regards to the budget on the Select Board page that can be written. They won't be read, but they'll be part of, Eric will provide them, is part of the record of that meeting of any comments that come in up to the meeting. So you're welcome to do that. So Eric, I'm going to turn over the budget discussion to you. And we've docked a half hour for this. I don't know if we'll need it all, but. And we've talked a half hour for this. I don't know if we'll need it all, but let's go ahead.
Thanks. Yeah, it went very quickly with the, the budget committee when we discussed this. The, the last time. And I'm still having trouble getting that screen to show. Just a minute here.
Bruce, while we're on hold, before we leave tonight, will we be able to schedule more select board meetings? I think we are out of them at the end of March.
Sure.
Thanks.
Consider that added to the, to the agenda under, at the very end.
All right. So here we are. Screen sharing and budget changes. So thanks Bruce for mentioning that meeting on Thursday. That is the, the last major public hearing. And really the big public hearing where we can have all of this up for discussion and debate. The select board meeting is the next meeting that, that, after that hearing, where action will be taken and changes may be made. But really the time to come forward and make comments and suggestions and really express, you know, what you'd like to see and might like to see changed in that budget is this Thursday. Because then we have time to include those changes in the final draft for the budget committee and select board to review and approve. So I would just can't emphasize that enough how important this Thursday is. Of course, we've had ongoing opportunities for the past several months, but nothing like, you know, waiting to the last minute. So I totally understand that and we're happy to hear any comments people have about, about the budget at that time. So we've had a number of recent meetings. The most recent meeting was last, was last week with the budget committee. And they went over this same draft document and these same changes that have been brought in since, since the joint meeting on capital that the select board and budget committee had on February 25th. So I believe at that time, we did also go over these changes up to this point. And the ones that were made the day of that hearing on the 25th, more or less all do relate to capital and were done to make sure that we had, you know, properly accounted for all the things that we need to when it comes to capital planning and capital management. So at that point, we were still in development. And so since then, I've gone through and made changes. The first of which was on, you know, March 2nd, when we had item 21. And I'll just reference the item numbers. It seems to be the easiest way to, to go through this. Item 21, we increased the ambulance service to show the actuals that we had coming in for the contract from Winthrop. And so that's, that's a good reliable number that we have there. Item 22, I did add $5,000 for the consulting for broadband. And that's something that we had discussed previously. Related to that is also a $4,000 line for publications, for additional mailings and printing. I didn't put that exclusive to broadband because we do have an existing line for publications and mailings. And so it was just an incremental addition of $4,000 more to that line to account for up to two or three mailings if we need to do that over the, over the course of the year to help with public education and outreach. Obviously, if we put out postcards or things like that, it costs us less. But that's items 22 and 23, which I believe meets the goal of focusing on broadband, working on broadband, but not jumping into a full phase one investment of $100,000 or so. So that's, I think, a good direction for us to head. Item 24, we did make some adjustments to Reedfield Enterprise Fund revenue lines. That did not, it was a net zero impact. Teresa and I just had some internal debate about where those should be located. And so there was a shift of a $10,000 from one revenue line to the next. And I just wanted to make that clearly visible. Item 25, we added $15,000 to the salt purchase line for winter roads. And that is to cover increased cost of salt, but also the fact that with the new contract, we went through it in detail, talked about operations, the things that worked well over the past five years with, with our current plow contractor. And we made a number of changes, but one of the most significant was increasing the amount of salt that we have in our salt sand mix. Because what tended to happen was the contractor would be putting down material and the material will be laid down enough so that they had the thawing and the movement of the ice and snow that they wanted. And that was, when we looked at it, seemed to be wasteful of the, the salt or, excuse me, wasteful of the sand because there wasn't enough salt in it. So they put down, you know, more material than needed to be applied just to get that melting effect. And we did talk to the contractor and we looked at what other towns were doing for ratios. And we moved our ratio from 15 to one, 15 parts sand to one part salt, down to 10 to one, which is more in line with other municipalities. The contractor had suggested eight to one, but I thought that was a bit too rich to be, you know, where we wanted to land. So we're trying this out. And again, when you increase the amount of salt, that increases the cost to the town because of, we have more material going in. So any questions on that one before I move on? Cause I, okay, great. Item 26, we added $20,000 to the parks capital for a beach master plan and design. And this was my effort at striking a balance between moving projects forward and also making sure we had capacity to, to do the work and do it well. Also wanting to step back a little bit from borrowing for projects that we don't have a full framework for. And I did talk to the main bond bank about borrowing and borrowing for projects that are further in the future. They had pretty significant concerns about borrowing for things more than, you know, 12 to 18 months out. It really needs to be a short term horizon. Anything more than two years without expending. You, there can be questions raised about, you know, the, the purpose of that money. And really you need to have everything expended fully after three years. Otherwise you could face penalties from the IRS for holding that money. So our bond council and the bond bank both gave advice on that. And it was basically the 12 to 18 month horizon. And you really only want to borrow for projects that are fully capital related and projects that are expected to be completed in that 12 to 18 month timeframe. So we can squeeze a little bit and we did that. And that's what we're looking at with line item 27, where we increased the bond amount to 395,000 from 250,000. And what happened was $145,000 of paving that had been scheduled for FY 23. We did talk to the road committee about it and there was no objection to moving that forward a little bit. In part because we do have this opportunity to, if it happens this fiscal year, great. If it doesn't, we have a schedule, we know what the costs are going to be. We have it all planned out. So there's no real issue or concern about not realizing that project in the next two years that we're, that we're looking at. So it might fall into the category that originally planned, we originally planned for anyway. It increases the amount of money that we were borrowing, but not to an unwieldy level. Takes advantage of some of those lower rates and also prioritizes some work. But again, does it in a way that isn't going to double up? We're not going to have, you know, a half million or a million dollars worth of paving coming due at the same time. And another reason for that is the two roads that we're paving in FY 21 are, and 22 are major travel roads. Sort of in Hill and Plains Road. The, the road, the roads that we're looking at for FY 23 are lower traffic peripheral roads. And they will have a longer lifespan without question than the two that we're paving right now. So we're, we're mixing things up a bit in that way. And that's going to help spread out the burden of that repaving when it does eventually come due in 12 to, to 20 years. Item 28, we added $50,000 to the use of road operating reserve. And that can best be described as a balancing. Every year, if we have funds that are left over in the road operating budget, it rolls into an operating reserve. Right now we have an estimated 100,000 roughly at the end of this current fiscal year available. It's probably going to end up being more than that as we continue to have, you know, we're, we're slow in moving things along as far as projects because of, in large part because of COVID, not the only reason. But so carrying a large operating reserve is something that we have tried to avoid. We haven't dipped into this account for a number of years. So it seemed a reasonable place to offset some of the increased cost for borrowing and also just increased paving in general. So we have that use of fund balance to help spread things out and offset some of the costs elsewhere on the budget. Item 29, I can increase the contingency to $50,000 and that is up from 25,000. And this one's a little bit more complicated, but it's fairly simple. So I wanted to balance the budget. We wanted to make sure that we did not have a tax increase. That was one of the directors we had going into this. And in order to do that, we need to account for a few different things that we're still not 100% sure of yet. And those are primarily relating to wages and benefits. And also we do have the contingency amount, that 25,000 that's there for whatever is needed. But when we're talking about wage and benefit lines, rather than create and then recreate and add and take out over probably 20 plus budget lines for unknowns as far as what we're going to put in for any kind of wage increases, for matching amounts for retirement benefits, things like that, that we're still discussing. I just plugged in a placeholder that I believe is going to be more than enough to account for any changes that happen with relation to payroll and benefits. Once we have it ironed out, those numbers will be backed out of this contingency and put into the appropriate wage and benefits line in the appropriate departments. But this was a clean way for us to account for it, make sure that we had it in there. And then to deal with it, you know, as where it properly belongs, once we have a final, a final number. And the last thing that I did since we presented the last budget draft was I did adjust the mill rate to 15.77. And that is near zero tax impact for FY 22. And it also does increase that borrowing, which were two of the goals that we were looking at from that capital meeting. So this was my, my attempt at meeting those goals or those, those priorities and keeping, keeping with the, the budget that we've had in place so far. So if you look what we have, this is outside of any increase to the school is a, for a home that two years ago was valued at $200,000. With that 10% factoring over two years brings that value up to 242,000, which is still, we're still chasing the state numbers, honestly. But it gets us close to what the state says we should have value for that property. Equalized for those increases, we're looking at a very small decrease for a home of that value. So that's good. I think it meets the goals. And I'll open it up for any questions or comments or just, you know, broad board discussion on the budget and the process.
I have a question regarding the school probable, possible increase. If we were looking at $150,000 increase, do you have any idea what that would do to our bottom line?
51 cents.
Yep, exactly. Yep.
Well, maybe, I mean, it's, it's a combination of valuation and, and percentage and sent students. But as close as I can get, that's about it, is about a half, about a half a dollar. So on that same chart, that would be $123. But I stress they're not finalized yet, just like we aren't either.
Right.
But I would expect an increase. I, I don't think they're going to be flat this year.
No, they're not. They're at least 3% and maybe, maybe up, you know, up above that. But I think 3% is probably right about where they're going to land.
Right. I guess my comment is, as far as I can tell from the discussion and any follow-up I've had is that we know that, that the half a dollar is where they're at. We don't expect them to go up beyond that.
Right.
If anything, it could come down a dime or something like that.
I wish when we had been at that meeting that there was better representation from other towns. Once again, Manchester was not represented at all. On, it's just disappointing, but it was very nice of the school to invite us and to hold the meeting to begin with. So.
Well, I'm personally proud that our board participated. It shows you, you take that very seriously. Are there other questions on the budget revisions? That's a very thorough update, I think. I guess I have one comment on the increased contingency. And I understand how we're going into that and how we're backing out. And our contingency level has been 25,000, I believe for several years now, Eric. Is that the right amount? Or when we back out, should we leave a little bit more in contingency?
It's hard to say. It's a contingency line, right? So the board in the past has used, you know, 10 to 15,000. If, if we hadn't had, if things hadn't wrapped up the way we had, had hoped they would, or the way they did with the, the project for the fire station and library, we could have dipped into that. And we do have unforeseen things happen once in a while that have been able to be absorbed within the departmental budgets. And if we, you know, we're playing roulette all the time. If we have something happens that can't be absorbed in a departmental budget, it would be really nice to have that there. So I think that 25,000 is probably a minimum. And one of the things that I've looked at in the past is that we have commonly had our reserve, our contingency be similar to the overlay. And we did increase the overlay last year, the last two years actually, because of the COVID and the unknown consequences of that. I, I think that we're probably okay. I think the next year, we're probably going to drop that, that contingency or, excuse me, the overlay back down to $20,000 up from the 50 that it's at now. But the contingency, I think, you know, that, that could stay at 25, it could be increased. In the end, it goes back into the general fund. So if you don't spend it, it goes back. It's really a policy question of how much leeway the board, you know, wants to afford itself in, in that, you know, it, putting it in that way, really it's the voters that would vote on it. But I don't see an issue with a larger contingency. But it's really up to the board and what kind of policy direction you want to set for, for that type of, you know, some people would call it a slush fund. I would never call it that because the select board, every year I've been here has been very diligent about only spending it for very specific purposes that are clearly defined and discussed. So it's, it's not that. It's an emergency fund.
And what's our overall budget, what's our overall budget size?
Right now, let's see here. I will share one more time. And we are looking at expenses. Let's see, that's 6. something million. Let's see, make it bigger so I can read it. Hopefully everybody else can too. 6.95, so almost $7 million for the total expense.
Yeah, my point is that $30,000 in contingency on that size of a budget is really saying to the public, there may be just a small unforeseen expense or two that occur. And it's, it's almost like, all those numbers are real numbers. I get that, but it's almost like it's almost enough to, a rounding error, if you will. So $30,000, I think, being set aside. I, I, I think it probably, we don't need to vote on that tonight. But I'd recommend holding that amount in the, in the contingency when we finalize that.
My thoughts on that are if we're using it for some anticipated, but not fully known employee costs. If those costs become known prior to finalizing the budget, I'd like to put them where they belong and pull the contingency down.
The intent is that, that that will be done completely.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So if we're looking at, if we're looking at the school possibly going up 100 to 100 So, so if we're looking at, if we're looking at the school possibly going up 100 to 150,000 dollars and we pulled another 25,000 out of that, that means it's a smaller tax increase. And I think we've done really good on the 25, so leaving it at 25 or 30 would be comfortable for me.
Okay. Anybody else?
Bruce, Ralph.
Yeah.
Some, some thoughts about the enhanced borrowing. I would prefer, given the fact that the, the, the ratcheted up number is, is not for anything that, that has to be done this next fiscal year. I would like to see us hold the line on what we had originally planned to borrow for basically completing the firehouse and library projects and leaving it there. I have some problems, or Eric explained the, the end around for, for perhaps using that, that borrowing for advancing the road maintenance schedule. But I'm not convinced that the need is there and, and is pressing enough to warrant the addition of those funds. And on the backside of it, what it does is it changes the schedule, I believe anyway, significantly enough so that when all of those enhanced improved miles come due again at some point down the road, pun intended, that we will be looking at increased costs to, to maintain extra miles of road outside of what the original maintenance scheduled call for. So I, I would, I would like to scale the borrowing back.
Other comments on that or any other aspect of the revisions that have been shown to us this evening?
I just want to say that it's, it's pretty amazing, the work that goes into this. And I just want to congratulate everyone, Eric explaining those things, the timeline, the way this is set up. I, I really like, obviously this is going to be something that, that I, I speak to. But I really like the idea of a plan for the beach. I, I think sometimes we get so caught up in like, what, what I, like, I, this is what I want and I have all these ideas and I know a lot about what I don't want. But I think having the, the sort of idea about let's plan, let's do this smart and, and making those outdoor spaces really beautiful. Part of what I'm doing on the, the comprehensive plan committee is that you have to kind of be a leader on, you know, certain areas. And one of the areas is our public spaces and things like that. And I think the, the, the investment in public spaces with fields, with the beach, it only serves to help our town. It, it only serves to help our town. And I, I, those sorts of things, I think, go a long way when people are talking about where do they live and, and sort of building that sense of community. Giving stuff back to the people who, who have chosen to live their lives here, I think is a good thing. And I think that we, we, as a select board, it's been proven year after year, our biggest concern is our budget and how we control it. And I think we do a good job of that with the help of the budget committee and their work.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the budget? Catherine?
I have a quick one, kind of piggybacking on Ralph's. I'm not real concerned about the road schedule being thrown off significantly. We're only looking at something that would be off by 12 months or less. But I think if the road committee is meeting, as you said, very soon, and we find out that we have a bid that's $50,000 less, then we could borrow less. So that might be a good way to adjust.
Okay. Other comments? I think.
If the bids are coming in less, it's a good time to pay because it's less.
Yeah, I mean, that's always a consideration. I'm sure the board, I'm sure, excuse me, I'm sure the road committee looked at that. But I also think the road committee is not going to accelerate a piece of paving to the extent of something that doesn't need to be done.
No.
Just because there's price convenience.
No, but they're talking about adding that section in 12 months early. I mean, it costs less to do it 12 months early than if you wait.
Yep. Okay. So I think Eric, you heard a number of different items to possibly reflect within the budget. There's no hard orders here. We're going to take our vote next month, which could end up in some hard orders, I suppose. But, you know, you can continually converse with board members if they had something they wanted to particularly look at. And you want to get some more information from them in particular on that viewpoint. How does that sound as a way to leave it this evening?
That sounds, that sounds great. And, and I will say that, you know, we are still fine tuning this. We still have to, I have to go back. And now that we're making really good headway on, for example, internet and point of sale system at the transfer station, I need to look at the monthly costs of that. You know, the, the internet is going to be probably a thousand bucks a year, so not a small expense. But something that we need to, you know, definitely keep an eye on. And there's little things like that that are still coming up. We still have a few weeks to work this stuff out. But yeah, please reach out and I'll, I'll reach out to folks too. If I have questions about any of the positions or views that were expressed.
This is very minor, but I'll make a comment that anytime I've gone to a point of sales situation where there are fees for processing and so forth, they get blown away. I mean, the volume itself usually increases. So I, I don't think you have a lot of worries there. It just, it just, it gives convenience to the customer. And the customer appreciates that by making sure that they do their business that way. And you end up with a little bit more volume. So with that, we'll move on to new business. And 21091 is to consider an increase to select board stipends. This is not something we're voting on this evening for the public. However, it will be something we vote on in the overall budget. And the plan has been, the discussion has revolved around, and, and I'm, I, I will take personal responsibility as the prime mover for, for this. It's my feeling that if we ask people to volunteer time to serve on select board, they're not going to make a lot of money. And that's not the intent here. But the intent is to encourage people who may have a babysitter or some, some items of that cost associated with serving in a way to say, we appreciate your service in a very modest way. So currently, board members are paid $650 a year. That may be a surprising number to some people in the public. And we're talking about that being $1,000 a year. And the board chair gets an additional $1,000. And I think actually, under this plan, the board chair gets an additional $500. So it's in, in terms of the total package for the select board. And your, your, your item did not come through, by the way. It did not copy well.
Did not copy well. Okay. I'm sorry about that.
So I couldn't read it, but if, if I'm going to take the back of the screen math, we're spending somewhere around 4,000 something now. And we're talking about.
4750.
4750 and we're talking about $6,500. No, $5,500.
$5,500. And, and you're right, Bruce, that that actually is a, a, a paid decrease for the, for the chair. So, you know, I wasn't necessarily my intent going into that to have that happen that way. I just, you know, went off what I had recalled. So I don't see if any issue with, if, if this is the direction the board wants to take to, you know, making that chair differential 1,000 because it is quite a bit more work when it's done properly. And, and it has been for, you know, my time here anyway. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out.
So thank you. So the reason, I, I mentioned the reason that I wanted to put this forward. And, you know, again, this is one of those things you could get into a lot of debate on, I suppose. But I wanted to make sure that we were being upfront about it because I didn't want somebody picking out of the budget later and say, you gave yourself a raise. Go ahead, Catherine.
I think it's been 10 years since this was raised, since the amounts were raised. So this is not unreasonable and certainly should be taking place. And I wholeheartedly disagree with lowering the chair. I think the chair gets the same, whatever that amount is, if it's 1,000 or 1,500 more, that should be on top of whatever the new rate is.
It's a thousand. It's a thousand.
Yeah, that has to be the same. It's a lot of work.
So Catherine's recommending that, and I would tend to agree with that. Because I'm not going to be chair. So, and, and I think it's important for somebody to, to be acknowledged.
Put that, that line would be up to $6,000, which is.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's truly a rounding error when we get down to that level. So.
Well, I, I thought, you know, if, if the legislature voted themselves a raise at, at 7:30 in the evening while everybody was eating dinner or whatever, we would be outraged. So I thought I would make sure that we broke it out as a separate item just so that the public witnessed the discussion about it. And we'll vote on the total, total budget next month. But our intent is to have that increase in there. Or at least the overall intent of those who spoke in regards to it. We'll move on to 21092. Yes, please.
I think, I think the increases are justified. Agree with Catherine on the, on the the, the notion that we should properly fund the chair position. If there is any concern at all about the, the the pushback, if you will, for want of a better description, about, well, they're voting themselves a raise, we could certainly phase these in and have them take effect as the election cycle goes through and have them take place incrementally.
We could. And if we were probably voting on it individually, we might decide to do that. I would like you to look at the budget in its totality. That's my own personal opinion on that. But I, I mean, I think it's, I think it's very warranted and reasonable. And I, again, Catherine is sort of my board historian. So she pulled that 10 years and would know that date. So I do appreciate that. And I'm very happy to talk to any member of the public about this. So good. We'll move on then to 21092, which is to consider a liquor license renewal for the Weathervein restaurant. My first question on this, did we waive the hearing or do we need?
That's something you'd want to do by motion.
Okay, I'm going to move that we waive a public hearing for this liquor license renewal.
A second?
So moved in second to waive public hearing of a liquor license renewal for the Weathervein restaurant. We rarely, rarely have any discussion on these kinds of hearings. And I guess my one question to you, Eric, is we are doing that, should have we done this as a two-step process?
No, we, we've waived, the, the board always has the discretion to waive that. I, I think that we've done that every year for two or three years now, anyway. So I don't, I don't see any issue with proceeding with the same approach.
Okay, great. Is there any discussion on the motion that's on the floor, which is to waive that liquor license hearing? And then we'll go into the liquor license itself. Seeing none, I'll proceed with the roll. Catherine?
Yes.
Ralph?
I guess.
Chris?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes. Okay, now we'll consider the liquor license renewal for the Weathervein restaurant. In your packet, you have cover letters mentioning that this is their 21st year of doing business in Reed Field. I read over, and I guess I've been reading the Weatherveins for five years. I, I just didn't see anything that was really any different whatsoever. So, and it looked like a completed application.
I would be willing to make a motion to approve the liquor license application renewal for the Weathervein restaurant as presented and authorized the select board to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
So it's been moved in seconded to approve the liquor license renewal for the Weathervein restaurant and approve the select board to sign the license application. I believe we are the signatories.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Good. Is there any discussion on the matter?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to the Weathervein. I know they're diligent in their work for getting this liquor license and diligent in all of their work, serving the public here in Reed Field. And we appreciate all of their adherence to the guidelines. So just wanted to add that. Thank you so much to Jeff and Gigi.
Great. Okay, well, go ahead. We have the motion on the floor. Catherine?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
And Bruce is also a yes. We'll move on to considering the approval of a shoreline septic holding tank for MAP 134 lot 008. Eric, I put it in your hands.
All right. So this is just a, a very not common, but routine activity. Items that happen in the shoreline under state statute do require in certain cases, a select board approval. So this is one where they are replacing a metal holding tank with a concrete holding tank, which is a wholly positive change. The, the, the metal tanks, you know, will rust out, will leak, will go into the lake. This change will put in place a concrete tank that will last much longer and be much better environmentally. In aggregate, that's how they, how they, how they go anyway. And Cliff would like us to just proceed with this. I don't, I don't see any issue or any reason why the board would not approve this installation.
I would make a motion to approve the subsurface wastewater disposal system application as presented in our packet for Linda and James Archer and authorized the select board to sign.
I'm going to second that motion. Okay, great. So it has been moved to, to approve the shoreline septic holding tank for MAP 134 lot 008. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll move to call a rule. Catherine?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes. And in added business, we are going to discuss the April and May meetings. How's that sound?
How about June too?
Sure thing, Catherine. I was, I was actually kind of thinking that and then I just stopped. So let's do that. So I'm grabbing an iPad here and I'm noting what we have is a public hearing on 5/13, which is the, is the public hearing for comment on the completed warrant. The one that's coming up on Thursday is on the budget itself. So that's where we might raise or low, lower something depending on public comment, I suppose. But the warrant hearing is really to say, vote this up or vote this down to the public. You'll have.
When is the next meeting?
29th of March.
The 29th of March. Thank you.
That's right. We have one more meeting this month. And so we're going to go ahead and set up our, make a decision if we need two meetings in April and May.
We have a meeting this Thursday for the budget.
Yes, we have a meeting for the budget. We will vote on the budget. Yes, we have a meeting for the budget. We will vote on the budget, um, on, uh, the, on, on the last meeting of this month, the 29th. This is the slack boards final budget, uh, recommendation. Is that true, Eric? We don't have, at, at what time do, at what point is that kind of final, it has to be finalized in order to print balance and all that stuff?
So that the 29th is when you would approve that. So we can then administratively finalize it, get it ready, get it off to the printers. So the-
And the budget committee, the budget committee meets on the first to do the same thing.
That's right. Yeah. So typically because the, 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 the select board can make changes that the budget committee can then vote on, but not necessarily vice versa, right? So if the, if the, um, yeah. Uh, the, the way, the way, the way it flows is the budget committee always needs to have that last vote because they have to vote yes or no to support the, um, the budget, the way we have it set up anyway. So.
So we'll have each of the warrants articles as well. So between now and-
On the 29th, you'll have the full draft warrant.
Can we get them prior to then, please?
Yes.
And I, I guess, I, I guess, yeah. What's that?
I see we have a working draft now.
I, I was just going to say that. I would reiterate that we don't mind even seeing a, a working draft in, in the, in the interim. So just as long as this is not final draft on it, um, it'll give us an opportunity to read it over, send that right out. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
I like to get a little extra reading in.
So after the 29th, when is our meeting after that?
We don't know.
That's what we're going to discuss now. So-
Good.
I am pulling up the, and I guess my question, I, I kind of defer to Eric on this because he knows the cycle a little bit better in terms of, I know he would like us to meet every two weeks, but I, I resist that. Um, but he knows the cycle a little bit in terms of maybe some bid timing that we need to make approvals of and so forth. So I am in the course of pulling up the month of April, May and June to get people's thoughts.
Um, Eric, do you think we might need to have one at the beginning of April in case something changed with the warrant or is it already sent to the printer by then?
So, um, we, uh, let's see, that goes to the printer. Uh, so, so it goes to the clerk on April 9th. And then usually two weeks after that is when it goes to the printer. So, um, I would say that if you, uh, I mean, I don't want to say there's a drop dead date other than the 29th, um, because I, it just gets very stressful, especially in transition times, um, uh, if it doesn't happen at that time. But, uh, you could have up until under state statute, April 9th. Um, and if you have a, a, a forgiving clerk, you could even have a week or two after that. But-
I would suggest that we, uh, have our next meeting on April 19th.
Is that a state holiday in Maine being Patriots' Day?
I think it is.
Yes.
Oh, Massachusetts, it is. Are you open that day, Eric?
Uh, no, we're not. We're closed for Patriots' Day.
So it would have to be the 20th.
Well, either one, I, I, I just feel like the, the, the 12th generally, I, I think by the time, that would be our two weeks. But with all of the stuff going on that previous week, there's no use in having a meeting and it's going, you know, the, the, if the, the 16th is our two week spot. So the 20th or the 26th would make the most sense to me in April. So I defer, but I would suggest either of those dates.
Yeah, I think the 26th is letting it run too long. I will, I will say this, that if some sort of hiccup happens in the budgeting process as we get down to our final vote and the budget committee, I'm not against calling a special select board meeting with appropriate public notice, which will be three or four days, uh, that we would do so. But I, I have no intent on that. I'm hoping whatever we see, um, on the 29th and we know what most of it is, we're just going to see warrant language applied to the numbers and some finalization on numbers. So I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah. Because if we have another meeting, then the budget committee has to have another meeting.
Yeah.
And we did, we did that, I'm not sure if it was last year or the year before, where we ended up doing two-
Rounds.
That, because there was some adjustment and I think it was probably, I think it probably was last year and it was probably just due to a lot of moving parts on COVID.
Yeah.
Yep.
Eric, you said that the, uh, snowplow bids are due in on April 15th. Is that something you want us to act on in April or in May?
Um, I mean, I think that May would be most appropriate because I do want to have the road committee have some time to look at it. Um, you know, we, we still would have, I mean, basically the contract doesn't really start until mid-October. Uh, we want to make sure that we have all the equipment and materials in place by then. But so if we had, um, you know, some time in, in, in May, uh, June, July, I mean, if five or six months for the contractor to pull their equipment together and get things ready, that's still plenty of time, I think. So May would be fine.
May 17th? Or would you prefer that to be the 10th?
I like the 17th and I like Dennis's 20th of April.
Oh, I'm writing them down. I haven't hard coded them in my calendar yet. And then, uh, June-
We're meeting on the-
When is, when is the election? The election is the 8th?
Eight.
That's right. June 8th. Yep.
So I would say we would meet June 7th.
And we are meeting on the 13th of May. I think that was the date, right, for the public hearing?
That's correct.
Yeah. Yep.
On the budget.
Yeah.
Yep. And so, um, you, you may want to consider a second meeting in June just for, you know, new board member, um, all of, you know, the appointments and all of that business. But, um-
I'd like you to probably, well, yeah, let's go ahead and we, we can go ahead. I, I would say you do have two meetings. I think this board ought to meet in June 7th if they have any wrap-up activity.
Yeah. June 7th and June 21st?
Sure.
Yep.
And what did you say for May, the 18th, the 17th?
The 17th of May.
And the 13th is a Thursday.
Is the budget.
Yeah. That's already booked under the budget.
And so there's no other, there's no second May meeting, correct?
Oh, that's correct.
Just the 13th and the 17th. Thank you.
And the April meeting on the 20th is a Tuesday, just an FYI.
Okay, great.
The only April meeting.
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think we need to vote on this. So, um, do you have those dates? Okay? I have them, Eric.
Yeah, no, I got, I got them.
Yeah.
June 7th and June 21st. Yeah.
Yeah.
And if those could be posted on the town website calendar, that would be awesome.
Yeah.
I know the public likes to know when we're meeting for things like the subsurface water wastewater approval thing, you know?
I, I will ask, um, I should know this, but who's next up on the, uh, the finance review calendar for the fourth? Chris is, okay. Great.
And I'm her backup. I'm her backup. Great.
I should be driving by then.
Watch out.
We, um, I'm going to move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters pursuant to 1 MR SA, section 405 subsection 6A. And we will be inviting, uh, the, uh, the town manager to join us. We will be adjourning the meeting and we'll make a note of this, of the time of adjournment without any action or vote on the executive session. So the public is aware that really we're ending the regular meeting right now. Um, and we do not intend to have any action coming out of the, uh, executive session. May I have a second for that motion?
Second. Go ahead, Chris.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to have an executive session, um, as, as previously noted. I'll call the roll. Catherine?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Bruce is a yes. So the regular meeting is now finished. Uh, Eric will be moving us to, um, another room.